In the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
White.
Mayor Snyder. Here. And yeah, Councilmember Hart is here if you didn't hear that, so. Okay, item number one.
Employee recognition service award pins.
Thank you, Mr. Casey.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Each month we like to recognize employees for achieving milestones in their service with the city, so I'd like to read some names into the record for achieving certain milestones. And one of the recipients is here in person to receive his pin. With five years of service to the city, Mark Alvarado, Senior Neighborhood and Outreach Services Supervisor with the Parks and Recreation Department; Justin Hesketh, Police Officer with the Police Department; and Christopher Rickard, Parking Coordinator with the Public Works Department. With ten years of service to the city, Bill Hornig, General Services Manager, Finance Department; Jose Ibarra, Grounds Maintenance Worker Two, Parks and Recreation Department; and Jeff Smith, Recreation Supervisor One with the Parks and Recreation Department. With fifteen years of service, Adam Naras, Geographic Information Systems Technician, Community Development Department. With twenty-five years of service, Greg Metcalf, Waterfront Maintenance Worker Two, Waterfront Department. And with thirty-five years of service, Debbie Southgate, Office Specialist Two with the Fire Department. And here to receive his pin in person with thirty years of service is Dave Ward, Fire Captain with the Fire Department.
All right, come on up.
David William Ward, better known as Wardy, began working for the City of Santa Barbara Fire Department on February 23rd, 1987, as a firefighter. Prior to joining the city, Dave proudly served his country in the United States Marine Corps. He began his fire service career as a paid-call firefighter with the California Department of Forestry in Napa. David's worked on all three battalions, first starting on A Shift as a firefighter. Wardy then was promoted to the rank of Fire Engineer on June 6th, 1998, where he was transferred to the C Shift. And in 2003, he returned to B Shift for twelve years. In May of 2015, he promoted to his current rank of Fire Captain and is assigned to Station Four on A Shift. Throughout his career, he's responded to fires throughout the state of California and to Montana in 2003 on the Wedge Canyon Fire. David's certified in Airport Rescue Firefighting, or ARF, trained in Urban Search and Rescue, and has additional training in Equine Rescue, all making him an asset to the Fire Department. He recently received an award for Excellence in Aircraft Rescue Firefighting Training and received a reward for completing over 300 training hours in ARF. David is supported by his fiancee Fatima and his stepson Adrian. Right. The City of Santa Barbara Fire Administration, coworker families, celebrate and acknowledge your loyal commitment and professionalism. Congratulations, Dave, for thirty years of service to the City of Santa Barbara and its residents. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, councilmembers. First, I'd like to thank. Dang it. I'd like to thank and recognize my family, the team and Andrea for their support and their patience with all the days away from home, the missed holidays, missed soccer games. I'd like to thank the ladies in the front office for their help in keeping the department running smoothly. I'm extremely fortunate and grateful to have been hired by the City of Santa Barbara. It's been an amazing thirty-year career. And I've really enjoyed working with the dedicated men and women of the Santa Barbara Fire Department, many of whom are here today. I appreciate your support. After thirty years, I still love my job. I love coming to work every day. And I'll be here for a while longer, I hope. I'd also like to thank Mitch Vaughn, who thirty-two years ago took the time to talk to me about the Fire Department and the city when I came around to check it out and made it sound like a place I wanted to work, which it was. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much for being here. Any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and public comment, I have two speaker slips here. We have two minutes here at the podium. We'll start with Monte Cole, to be followed by Tom Becker. Good afternoon.
Hey, Madam Mayor and council. Monte Cole here, just talking about Alice Keck Park Water System. We can gather water for the park. It's pretty much laid out in these plans here. I don't have a duck in this pond, though. You can have these plans, you can use them to submit for state grants. There's $800 million or more of state grants for these kind of projects, so trying to bring that to your attention, I'm sure you know maybe of that, but there are easy ways to get water without pumping it in or decel, which is good because you don't always depend on it. But this water falls on the park and we can grab it as it passes and store it on the park grounds, use it up and down the park corridors in town. Cost is probably $300,000, pay for itself in a couple of years, plus it's free because it's all grant-supported. So, there you have it. The parks, commissions, and such will not do anything unless they are told, apply for grants, so that's what I'm urging. Tell them to apply for grants and you can get the money and build these projects. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Tom Becker?
Thank you, Tom Becker. Last week, I addressed the City Council on an agenda item about the 101 HOV project, and I didn't have enough time to finish my comment to you, so I'm going to finish it now. My comment is that when you're dealing with the Trump administration, better be nice to the Trump administration because they control now a lot of your funding that your government relies on to function. Imagine what would happen if you received no federal funding for transportation. Imagine what would happen if the Section Eight housing that you have in the city had its funding cut. Now, Mr. Trump isn't going to cut funding to hurt his political opponents. He's not going to do that. But he will cut funding if you people present false, misleading information to the federal government for projects that you are seeking funding from. Or, for instance, Section Eight housing, which I'm not really that concerned about, but let's just say if the federal government were to find out that you had illegal aliens living in your Section Eight housing, which is unlawful, you could have that funding completely cut off. What I'm trying to say to many of you is you don't seem to realize that your side lost an election, bigly, and I mean, big time. And you need to get over that feeling of resentment and anger and work with the Trump administration for the good of your own constituency. Sacrifice your own feelings for a little while, put aside your own egos, and remember that your constituency relies on federal funding for the operation of its city. And if you people continue to act in the ways that many of you have acted, you're going to get that funding cut. So be careful and support the Trump administration. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Onto the consent calendar, you have an item to read.
Item number two, Reclassification of Administrative Specialist Position in the Airport Department, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, amending Resolution Number 16-045, the Position and Salary Control Resolution for Fiscal Year 2017, affecting the Airport Department effective November 26, 2016.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. Is there a question or a motion for the consent calendar? Moved by White, seconded by Rouse. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. And then item number five.
Request from Mayor Snyder and Councilmember Dominguez to review Community Development Department noticing requirements.
Thank you. So this is a request from two councilmembers. I'll just make some initial comments and then if Mr. Dominguez has any at that point, and I want to thank staff at the Community Development Department for some information here. So, Mr. Dominguez came to me to ask to put this on, and actually, this is an issue that has come up from time to time, my entire time on council. When I was first on council and part of the updated MPO, the Neighborhood Preservation Ordinance, there was a conversation at that point of should we do, what should we do about noticing requirements as it relates to tenants and not owners? And the conversation got so far and it kind of stopped, there was a lot on our plate, we just never really finished, I think, that part of the conversation, although we were monitoring it. It's obviously come up again in the last few years, and so I just thought it seemed timely to bring it up, and so I appreciate you bringing it to my attention again, and anything you want to add at this point?
The main motivation was the high number of renters we do have in town. I'm a renter, a lot of us are renters, but about 60% of the City of Santa Barbara are renters. So I want to make sure that that group, that large majority of stakeholders in the city have notice of what's going on around them, what type of developments, so that they can pitch in and talk about what they may want, what they don't want, and protect their rights and interests.
Great. So with that, there's some ideas that came out of the department, and thank you so much. If you could introduce yourself and go to the presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Snyder and members of the council. My name is Mia Martinez. I'm the administrative supervisor for the Community Development Department. We're here today at the request of Mayor Snyder and Councilmember Dominguez to give a brief overview of community development's noticing requirements and to seek council direction regarding the inclusion of tenants in our future noticing. When local government takes certain action under state planning laws, we're required to give at least ten days' notice prior to a public hearing to owners of the property, the authorized agent, the applicants, local agencies, and owners of real property within 300 feet. Also, it needs to be published in at least one local newspaper, and the notice must include the date and time and place of the hearing, the hearing body, the location of the property, and a brief description of the matter to be heard. For projects located in the city's coastal zone and that require a coastal development permit, a notice of the public hearing should also be mailed to occupants of residence, including apartments on or within 100 feet of the subject property, and to the California Coastal Commission. Notices for these projects must also provide additional content, including the process for appeals of local decisions. The Community Development Department also provides public notice for certain development projects that are heard by the Architectural Board of Review, the Historic Landmarks Commission, and the Single Family Design Board. In addition to the required mail notice, the department may also require additional noticing for certain projects. Additional noticing may include a posted notice on the project site and/or additional notice delivered to the tenants of any of the 10 to 20 lots closest to the project site, and may also request agendas to interested parties who request to be notified of special projects. Notices are mailed ten days in advance, consistent with state and city requirements, and agendas are mailed 72 hours in advance of a meeting, consistent with Bren Act requirements. Although tenants make up 60% of the population of the City of Santa Barbara, state regulations do not require that they be directly notified of a project in their neighborhood, and city regulations only require notice for tenants of 10 to the 20 closest lots for design review hearings. Until recently, the city had no way of identifying multiple unit or mixed-use developments, and there was no effective way of obtaining addresses for tenants under 300-foot radius of the city's, I'm sorry, using the city's centralized geographic information software, which contains parcel owner and address information, but does not contain the addresses associated with the parcel. Currently, tenants' addresses for any projects requiring tenant noticing are obtained by the applicant, and they're typically obtained by walking around the neighborhood. The city has recently invested in new land development application software, Acela, which will be used throughout the city by various departments. As part of this upgrade, city information technology staff are developing a new layer in the CGIS to link all city mailing addresses to the parcel, and this will enable staff to include tenants in the department's future noticing procedure. Once this layer is available, staff will be able to identify if a lot is a multiple unit or mixed-use development, and they'll have the ability to include tenants when mailing notices for projects in the city. However, it will not include the tenant names. Information Technology anticipates having this mailing address layer completed and available for use by the end of calendar 2017 or sooner. There will likely be an increase in costs and other impacts related to noticing of tenants on all development projects. These costs include additional staff time to copy and send the notice, additional staff time to respond to public inquiries and comments, additional staff time at hearings due to potential additional public comment, and postage. The hard costs could be recuperated by an increase in development fees, however, projects may also be delayed because design review hearings may not be able to accommodate as many projects on an agenda. Staff is seeking direction from council regarding the inclusion of tenants on future noticing. If council directs staff to include tenants on future noticing, then the Attorney Office advises that the tenant noticing be made directory rather than mandatory, as the Constitution does not require tenant noticing. So allowing hearing to go forward despite minor noticing errors won't affect tenant, I'm sorry, minor noticing errors affecting tenants can be allowed. So this concludes my presentation for today. I have a team of seasoned experts with me, Renee Brook, City Planner, George Buell, Director of Community Development Department, and there's also staff here from Information Technology.
Thank you. Mr. Casey, did you want to add anything?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, just on the timing, the new Acela program will be done by the end of the calendar year, which will be a good transition. We do think that within a matter of months, we might be able to start using the database ahead of the Acela. So if your interest is for us to pursue this, I think I would expect you want us to implement it as soon as we can, and we think it'd be more than a matter of months rather than the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of questions for staff. And the noticing requirements, and this almost might seem quaint now, but at least publish in at least one local newspaper. Does that have to be a print publication? Does it have to be a daily versus a weekly? We, you know, these situations are changing as we speak, and I don't know what the best way to inform people is or what the legal parameters are of that.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Rouse, I'm looking up the government code language specifically because it does say it has to be in print and a circulation of a certain size. I do know that each year, the city sends out requests for proposals, and we accept bids for which paper qualifies to meet our legal deadline. Okay.
Yeah, I was, I'm happy to help. It has to be a newspaper of general circulation, that's a term of art, and newspapers get adjudicated as papers of general circulation. I think we're currently using the Montecito Journal, so yes, it needs to be a print publication for now.
But as you said, Montecito, so it doesn't need to be necessarily a daily?
That's correct.
Okay, because they have bulk sale notices, and the same way you can use a weekly or a daily for those as well, so I assume that's the same.
Right. I don't know the details of how the city clerk's office makes the choice of which of the papers to use.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then that kind of leads to my other question about in terms of, I realize that there's mailing requirements for noticing now for the current parameters, but expanding those out, I'm sure the plan is to mail, but I mean, are there electronic substitutes for that kind of noticing that are considered? I was just thinking about expense and staff time and then going forward.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, we do as much electronic notification as we can. We do still have to meet the state law as a minimum and do the print notice and do the mail notice. Whenever we can, though, we do, we will send out email notifications to interested parties, to boards and commissions, distribute information that way when we can. Whatever we can do that's less time-intensive, but it can't substitute for the state mandated print and mail notice.
Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
This, I think, is an impossible question to answer, but do we have any guesstimate on what the increase in costs will be? It obviously depends on the project, right? Some of you may have to send out a lot, some none at all, extra.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, I'm George Buell, Community Development Director. We do know that the factor by which the number of notices would go up, we'd be sending out four to five times more notices than what we currently are. That's based on a rough estimate. We took some scenarios throughout the city and just wanted to see what would happen. And so the cost would go up accordingly, and so it would go up probably a factor of four to five as well.
And what's the cost now, then?
The costs are built into our application fee, and I don't know what that portion of the fee is offhand. I can get that to you, but.
Well, I mean, I think it's all admirable, but I'd just like to know what it's going to cost. Is there any way, do we have a cost per person right now?
Let me, if I may, let me also add this, is if the council, if it was the pleasure of the council to notify tenants as is being considered today, we would factor that into our upcoming fee resolution, and we would pass that cost along to the applicants.
Okay.
And you're talking costs like postage, I mean, it's like postage and the time.
Yeah.
Postage and time.
Yeah.
So the software, if you're trying to look for specific names, obviously I can see could take time, but mailing to resident@thisaddress, you know the addresses, I mean, that can happen much sooner, correct? So even if you don't have the exact name of the tenant, you could still mail something to that location.
Madam Mayor, my understanding is right now, we don't have a way to access that information from our desks. So the way that we do notify tenants when we're required to do that is it's on the applicants. It's on, the burden is on them to provide those labels to us, and they typically do that by walking around, because although we know that apartment buildings might be adjacent to a project, we don't know how many are in there or how they're numbered.
Wouldn't, like, the US Postal Service have that information? I mean, through rain, sleet, dead of night, you know, they know where everyone, right? Wouldn't that be information we could get from, because I know we do mail, I mean, there are mailings that happen from vendors that say resident@ and it goes everywhere, so.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, members of the council, with respect to notifying tenants, just recently, when I mean recently, I mean within the last week or so, our IT division has come into a database that has all the addresses of tenants and property owners, or of tenants, all the units that are in either mixed-use or multifamily developments. And so this is new information, and as indicated by the city administrator, because we now have this information, we are fairly confident that in a matter of months, we'd be able to notify tenants as well.
All right, great. We do have a couple of public comment speaker slips, so let's get to them. Natasha Todorowick and Natalia Giovanni. You're going to waive your time? Okay, so Ms. Todorowick, you have up to four minutes.
Resident and also business owner, thank you very much for considering this. The noticing requirements currently are lacking, and I'm really glad you're thinking about expanding them. We've had this issue for a little while and seen a lot of different things come up because the noticing has been problematic. We've talked about the marijuana dispensary. That issue was problematic because the neighbors in the area did not get the noticing that was really needed for them to know what was happening with that dispensary. I just got back from a three-week trip and found a notice in my mail that said on the 17th, there was going to be a review of signage of a business that's right outside my residence, and I missed it. January 17th, I left January 14th, didn't get the notice. It came in after the fact. Noticing is a problem. We had the issue with the AUD that we talked about at other council meetings, where 7-Eleven North Milpus, people in that area didn't get the noticing. So I applaud you for reviewing this. Thank you very much for thinking about expanding it. I think that it should not just be extended to renters. I think that the timing needs to be extended. I think that the notification needs to be much more rigorously reviewed, and that it's got to be thought through a little bit better so that people actually do get notice. Not only renters, homeowners as well, anyone who is potentially impacted by that particular project. And leaving that burden with the developer to figure out who's there is just not appropriate. So please pass this, but expand it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment. It's to the council. Mr. Hotchkiss?
How many days in advance do we notify people?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Hotchkiss, we send them ten calendar days in advance of the hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the thought that went into this from our request. It sounds to me that you have a good first steps moving forward. I think if we can get something moving in the next couple of months and then get more detailed as we go, that seems to make sense. I appreciate the city attorney's recommendation on the language here, and perhaps as we're looking at this, just to review the timing of noticing, of the, you know, making sure people get it when, before the event happens. I know that's the intent there, but now that we're looking at this, it'd be just a good chance to look at that again. So I, obviously, I wouldn't have put this forward if I didn't agree with it, but love to hear from my colleagues and see if there are any other comments if we can move this forward. Mr. Hart and then Mr. Dominguez.
Yeah, thank you. I think this is really appropriate, and I don't think the cost is significant, and it wouldn't make any difference if it was, because it's important to recognize everybody in the city and have their input into the process. So I think this is, it's great that the technology has kept up or has caught up to the need, and we have a solution that is workable and will provide extra access to the city's process, which is important.
Okay, Mr. Dominguez?
I want to echo the mayor's comments about being happy that the staff has looked into this and brought us some great information to start with. I think one way we can go to take advantage of technology is we have the state laws' minimum requirements, but we can fill in a lot with technology with emails and websites to add a level above and beyond that. I never want to use technology to replace some of the noticing requirements we have for people who aren't, who are kind of caught behind the digital divide, but in terms of providing a discretionary level of noticing to people who might be interested. So we were using Acela as our vendor. I'm sure they have community engagement software. I'd love for everyone to have an app on their phone where they could register if they wanted to, to see anything that was happening in their neighborhood and stay on top of it through the same smartphone app. They could also register their comments or provide feedback, and it's so advanced, they can also post things related if there's bulky items that need to be picked up, whether there's a fire hydrant that's shooting out water, or there's graffiti that needs to be cleaned. This is all technology we can harness very simply that will help people be notified. So we can provide a much broader, deeper level of noticing for very, very cheap costs if we do this right. Again, without eviscerating the noticing that the state requires and buttressing that again with a higher level of city requirements. But I think it's something that we should talk to our residents about and see what they're comfortable with when we make the final recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'd like to, number one, I do, I do agree, this is important and is a good improvement. I'd like to take to heart the city attorney's recommendation that this, the new added-on level of noticing is directory rather than mandatory, because I can see us going down the wormhole with that otherwise. And I also don't want to completely fall in the civic sword when it comes to noticing because as sitting in an ordinance committee, when you have things come up that have been published, publicized, talked about in the daily paper, talked about in the weekly papers, gone through four or five different ordinance committee meetings, and somebody comes up right there at the dais and says, "Nobody told me about this." Now, this is an improvement and enhancement for renters. I think it's very appropriate, I think it's necessary, but I don't want to sit here and say that everything we've done up to now has been inadequate, because I don't believe that either. So I think this is a nice enhancement, I think we should go forward with it, but I think we have to be a little cautionary about how broad blanket we get.
Okay. Mr. Hotchkiss?
I agree with what Mr. Hart, well, what everyone said, but I would just at some point like to come back and figure out what our really increased costs were, so we know where we stand. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. White?
Thank you. I just, I support the wave that I'm hearing. I just, I support the wave that I'm hearing, building here.
Great.
It's great. Thank you for bringing this forward. This is a nice addition to our transparency.
Perhaps the cost issue can come during the fee schedule, because that, it's sort of our cost and how it's going to be passed on or not, or whatever. That could be a good way to bring up those items. Then you'll have more information by then, anyway, it sounds like. Okay. We do need a motion. Mr. Dominguez?
I'll make the motion. But first, I wanted to ask Mr. Casey about a possible timeline, or how do you think this will play out? Because you mentioned Acela as being one of the parts, but also being able to move forward pre-complete, wind up with Acela.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, I would suggest that in order to see that we have everything in place and that we're, we've got all the i's dotted and t's crossed, that we roll this out with at the beginning of the fiscal year, that will give us time to make sure that the database is in place, that it's accurate. We can also have the information to you relative to the fees. Otherwise, we would be doing an awful lot of noticing without recouping the cost. Or we would have to come back to you before then to amend our fee ordinance, free resolution, rather.
Okay. So regarding the timing of the motion, I'll leave it up to the staff to bring it back when you're at a certain comfort level.
That would be great.
Okay. So I move that staff comes back to council when they're ready and before the beginning of the fiscal year for us to move forward with this.
Okay. Mr. Casey?
Just a suggestion. We don't feel we need to come back to you to kind of implement it, so I'm not sure you need that in the motion. We're going to get it going as soon as we can. We think the start of the fiscal year is good. We'll amend the fee resolution as part of the budget process.
Could you come back to us in the form of a memo?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, that I think fits the.
Perfect. Good idea.
Okay. All right. And then the world can know afterwards, sir. All right. Do we know what the motion is? Are we good? All in favor? Aye. Great. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. Councilmember Community Assignment Reports. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had the pleasure and privilege of having a meeting with Chief McElroy about the city's wildfire hazards. And I raise it now simply, first to report to you that I did so. And one of the essences of my lobbying with him was to maintain, is to assure that the council maintains ownership and participation in the wildfire threat. This is something that it is our largest consistent threat. And obviously, councils change every couple of years. And it's a problem that I've seen even in my eight years here wax and wane a little bit in terms of getting the decision-makers out there and involved. So I'm just, I'm raising it again as a hope and a request that council members get tours, get information. Just, I don't want a council member to be, having their first experience with wildfire being, to show up at a fire camp after we've lost a hundred houses in a T-FI or something like that, just to stay fully engaged. Because this is, if you just, the history shows that this is our largest single threat. So, anyway, he promised that we'd be getting a tour during this year, for at least this year's iteration. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hart?
Yes, I attended the Hospitality Santa Barbara Annual Meeting. I think a number of us were there, probably, in fact, most of us, I think. And just wanted to recognize some of the award recipients. Mitchell Severn with Bouchon does a fabulous job as the Hospitality Star of the Year. And Millie Matz from the Hotel Santa Barbara Group is the Hospitality Manager of the Year. David Velazquez from the Santa Barbara Zoo was the Hospitality Employee of the Year. And Downtown Santa Barbara was the Hospitality Business of the Year. It was a great event, and these are folks who are very deserving of the recognition for a lifetime work in their industry.
It's a great cold rainy week to go see movies. And so there are a lot of them out there all week. I want to, except for the wonderful, beautiful evening on opening night. It didn't rain for the film festival opening night. I know there's seven hundred-plus volunteers working on making this festival work, and I've heard all good things. So we look forward to that continuing through the rest of the week. That was a lot of fun for opening night. And I think that's it. So we have a closed session. If you can read that.
Conference with real property negotiators recommending that council hold a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 to consider the possible acquisition of real property interests. The real property is 740 State Street, Suites 201 and 202. The city negotiators are Paul Casey, City Administrator, Bob Samario, Finance Director, Arielle Cologne, City Attorney. And the negotiating parties are Mohamed Angidi Ma'Boob and Ray Ma'Boob. Under negotiation are the price and terms of payment.
Thank you. And we will adjourn from closed session. So see you next week.